Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brisbane City Council Meeting of August 7, 2017. We are going to start out with a report out from our closed session.
Mayor and council, the council had two matters on closed session tonight, one involving a claimant from Vincent Chang and the other from a claimant of Henry Ford Munier. And the vote, the council voted unanimously to deny both claims. I'm sorry, not unanimously on the other claim, it was a 3-2 vote on the Munier claim.
Thank you. And now I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. Adoption of agenda?
Move adoption.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item five, old business. Item A, Brisbane Baylands planning applications, Baylands concept plans, Brisbane Baylands specific plan, case SP-01-06, general plan amendment, cases GP-01-06, GP-01-10, related final environmental impact report, and water supply assessment. The subject site encompasses 733 acres, generally bounded on the east by US Highway 101, on the west and south by Bayshore Boulevard, and on the north by the city and county of San Francisco. Site general plan designations include northeast Bayshore Trade Commercial, Baylands Trade Commercial Plan Development, Beatty Heavy Commercial, and Marsh Lagoon Bayfront. And it is Zone C3 Heavy Commercial, C1 Commercial Mixed Use, M1 Manufacturing, and Marsh Lagoon Bayfront, Universal Paragon Corporation applicant. Item one, discussion and deliberations on the above planning applications, the planning commission recommendations, and any variations thereof, including maintaining the current general plan policies for the Baylands related to land use, including but not limited to mixed distribution and intensity of uses and development standards, and providing direction to staff concerning scheduling a public hearing concerning the outcome of such discussions or deliberations. Deliberations may also address the possibility of putting forth a ballot measure addressing some or all of the legislative actions related to the project that are under consideration by the city council. So before we have a staff report, I wanted to let this public know that our Sacramento lobbyists have been tracking legislation of interest to this city, including legislation relating to local land use and housing. They report that legislative negotiators have reportedly reached a tentative agreement on a package of bills impacting local government land use decisions. Our lobbyists are working to confirm the details of the proposed legislative package. Given the legislative summer recess, they anticipate that any specifics of the legislative package will not be known until the legislation is made public. They anticipate that this will occur when the legislature returns from its recess. In light of this development, I believe it would be best to wait for this new legislation to be made public and analyzed as to its relevance to the city before the council discusses or deliberates any particular land use plan. Accordingly, the discussion tonight will be limited to asking any questions or clarifications the council may have regarding the new responses and attachment four of the staff report. And we, of course, will take public comment as well. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Given the comments that the mayor has just indicated, there won't be a staff report as we won't be moving on to that item on the agenda, I do want to indicate that we will be working with the Sacramento lobbyist group. And as soon as we have some more clarification and understanding of state legislative package, we will report that back to the council. We just don't have any timing on that at this particular point in time. The staff is available to respond to any questions the council may have with regards to items that were answered in this week's packet that are fresh from the questions that the council have previously asked.
Thank you. And before we get to questions, I was informed that we have a representative here from Jerry Hill's office who has asked if they can give some brief statement before we move any further. So if that representative would like to come up at this time?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Joan Dentler, and I'm a field representative in State Senator Jerry Hill's office. He's asked me to be here this evening to deliver a statement on behalf of our district office and...
My name is Kevin Fong, and I'm a field rep with Assemblymember Kevin Mullins' office. And doing my duty, I will defer to the upper house, that is, the senate.
So I'd like to read the statement from Senator Hill and Assemblymember Mullins, if I may.
The city of Brisbane finds itself with an opportunity at a moment in history that, if acted upon, could revolutionize development, land use, housing, transportation, commerce, culture, the environment, and the economy on the peninsula and in the Bay Area. The Baylands project presents a rare and important opportunity to improve the quality of life for the residents of Brisbane and the region through sustainability plan that includes a variety of different components, and housing plays a central and essential role in that plan to build a sustainable community. People are increasingly interested in the opportunity to live, recreate, and shop where they work and vice versa, a concept that held true in the early days of most communities. Besides the added bonus of reducing traffic congestion, this concept has the potential to strengthen this community's cultural, civic, and communal properties in an environmentally sensitive design. When people live where they work, they have more time to engage and contribute to their community. This moment in time provides the city of Brisbane with a unique opportunity to demonstrate to the region and to the state that it can exercise local control and also demonstrate leadership in addressing the region's housing crisis, sea level rise, and transportation needs in a way that is smart, sustainable, and timely. It is the right thing to do for this and future generations. We are proud to represent the city of Brisbane and Sacramento, and we are always available to you as a resource. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I will turn to my colleagues for any questions from the staff report.
I do not.
Could you give a copy of the letter to the city clerk, please?
Good idea. Does anyone have any questions before we move on to public comment?
I did have one question that I request staff to provide some information on the legend for attachment one, and I thought that I would have that on the dais tonight.
I apologize for not having that for you, but I can provide it either this evening or prior to the subsequent meeting?
Further clarification just would be helpful for me on this. I know it's in the document, but I think having a short and concise documentation of that would be helpful to me in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Cliff, did you have any questions?
I did not. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, Ben.
All right. Well, I do have a stack of speaker cards, so we'll move on to that. Speakers have five minutes, and we'll use the light system, so it'll turn yellow when you have one minute remaining and red when your time is up, so please be considerate. First is Matt Regan.
Madam Mayor, council members, Cliff, old friend, how are you? I'm Matt Regan with the Bay Area Council. We represent about 300 of the largest employers in the nine-county Bay Area region, all sectors of the economy, from tech to biotech to education and everything in between. Our members, number one, concern that they report to us almost daily, is the lack of housing in this region for their workforce. They are expanding out of the Bay Area, they're looking at other cities to grow. This is an incredibly expensive and constrained place for companies to grow and for middle-income families to live. It's not the place it was 20 years ago. We have, in the last decade, we have created one, or permitted, rather, one housing unit for every eight jobs we've created. And that mismatch in the housing job supply is what's created our housing affordability crisis. Every morning, 170,000 people drive over the Altamont Pass from their affordable homes in Tracy and in Manteca and in Lethrop to their jobs right here in the Bay Area. That's not a sustainable model, it's not fair to those families, they should be able to afford to live here, but they cannot. That's not the worst environmental consequence. Every year, 250,000 low-income families leave California in search of affordable housing. 70,000 of those families go to one state, Texas. And as soon as they arrive, their greenhouse gas production per capita goes from three tons in California to 17 tons in Texas. So there are dire environmental consequences from our inability, or refusal, unwillingness, whatever it happens to be, to build sufficient housing here in our part of the world to support our growing population. And then there's an equity consequence as well, which binds all this together. The LAO's report from two years ago shows that the bottom 25% of income earners in California are spending 67% of their disposable income, their take-home pay, on rent. It's the single biggest driver of generational poverty in our state, is the inability for families to find safe, affordable places to live. This project gives this city the ability, the opportunity, to take a bite out of that problem. And we would urge that you make the long-term, responsible, sustainable decision, and use this site for the highest and best use, and that is a lot of homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Barnes?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. My name is Michael Barnes. I'm a Brisbane resident, and since 2008, when I was on the city council of Brisbane, I've been in favor of housing on the Baylands. I'm still in favor of housing on the Baylands. I still think it's a good idea. You know all the environmental reasons why it's a good idea. I think it can be built safely. But tonight, I'm, well, first, I'm concerned that you're not taking a vote, because it seems pretty clear the council doesn't have three votes for housing on the Baylands. And I was hoping that you would take your action so that the state legislature could then take some action. The city council did a survey of the citizens of Brisbane, and approximately half the people in Brisbane would consider some housing on the Baylands, but you have not followed up on your survey. I think it's because you don't like that answer. You also had the citizens' preferred alternative, a Baylands plan developed by the people of Brisbane, which included housing on the Baylands. But the city council stripped housing out of their proposal for the Baylands. So tonight, I'm here to say that you're not listening to me and people like me. I have a lot of knowledge of the Baylands. I started the Baylands process when I was on the city council. And I think that the fact that we have 120 legislators in Sacramento, and we have 130 housing bills in Sacramento, show that everybody in California thinks housing is a problem and that we should build some housing here. I'm concerned also that the city of Brisbane doesn't seem to have any allies. Recently, there was a meeting where our two county supervisors voted to proceed with a document that said there should be housing considered on the Baylands. Canapa and Pine voted against the expressed wishes of city representatives. Our two state legislators have just weighed in, saying there should be housing on the Baylands. If the city of Brisbane is going to persist in not permitting housing on the Baylands, I don't think you're going to be successful without allies. Historically, Brisbane has succeeded in fighting housing by having allies at the county level and at the state level. And it appears to me we don't have those allies. I'm very concerned that if the city continues in this stance, that the city could be punished in a way that would affect me, and I'm for housing. So please, consider some housing on the Baylands. Negotiate with your state legislators. I mean, you just had an invitation to talk to Jerry Hill. I say you take that opportunity and talk to him and say, what can we get if we build 1,000 units of housing? What could we get if we build 2,000 units of housing? Maybe you negotiate and say, 1,000 units, and then we get 20 years of exemption from the RENA process. And then we don't get penalized for building those 1,000 units when we come back into the RENA process later, because the RENA process also contains expectation for future building based on how much you have built. Or if it's 2,000 units, get a 40- or 50-year exemption. Do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Krupka?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Paul Krupka. I'm an independent transportation consultant with over 35 years of multimodal experience in the San Francisco Bay Area, with substantial experience right here in the county and Silicon Valley. I've studied many development and transportation projects, all kinds and sizes, and have conducted numerous analyses like the ones done for the Baylands project. I'm a San Mateo County resident, long-term, for 30 years. I think you've got a unique project, clearly. I think the developer's proposal is a great example of a mixed-use, transit-oriented development that offers many complementary features. And these complementary features will act to reduce the overall external impacts on the transportation system. Previous speakers spoke to that. The proposal provides many new homes, which provide additional transportation benefits and help ease the housing crisis we all face. I think the investments you all have made at the city, the developer, the community at large, in doing the planning, conceptual design, evaluation, and community engagement have resulted in a world-class project that is scalable and which I think you're ready for decisions about magnitude and mix, followed by discussions about implementation. This is what, indeed, you've been talking about. I think the parties need to keep the big picture in mind and consider the biggest and the best project you can possibly create that will complement the city and that will also, in turn, complement the county, the region, and the state. This is a world-class, major opportunity for you. You and we all have to commit to the hard work required to bring the project to fruition. The project will take many years, it's not an overnight opportunity, but will bring a steady stream of major benefits to the city, county, and region, in my opinion. Once you get to the point of implementation, of course, you all know that it will take sustained, rigorous planning and engineering coupled with community engagement to produce infrastructure and land use in complementary fashion, get the land use, get the infrastructure in place before the land use is occupied. I, in my professional opinion, a truly mixed-use project should be supported with a reasonably high number of homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Evelyn Stivers?
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Evelyn Stivers. I work with Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with communities and their leaders to create and preserve quality, affordable homes. We're fortunate enough to have an office in San Mateo, right on El Camino Real, in an affordable housing development. And every day, at least three or four people come to our office and seek of housing. Most of these people are working families. They have well, what would be considered in most parts of the country, very well-paying jobs, and they are struggling. They are struggling to get housed in this area, and that's because we've built 56,000 jobs in the last three years and less than 2,000 homes. It's decisions that are facing, the decision that is facing you is unfortunately not unique on the peninsula. A number of cities are looking at the choice between housing and jobs and choosing only jobs. I understand that there's a lot of fear with the housing associated with this development. Some people are concerned that future residents would have health challenges, and others fear that this would change the character of your community. Please work with us to overcome those fears. By making a decision to only build jobs in this community, you are not just impacting Brisbane, you are impacting the entire region. We can get to yes. I know you can. So we support the developer's proposal. We think you can come to, come up with a plan that would allow for housing, allow people to live in your community, allow them to be a part of your community, and I hope we can work with you to get there. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Vincent Wu?
Thanks for having me. My name is Vincent. I lived in the Bay Area my entire life, mostly in Milpitas or Santa Clara County. I live in San Francisco now, and I'd like to share a small anecdote about a lot of the people I went to high school with. At least five of them have gone on to become teachers, either in elementary school, middle school, or high school capacities typically. And a lot of them are struggling not to find a place to work, but a place to live. And how they choose which school district they worked for, which school they want to go to, is a really, really tough challenge for them, because the way that the teachers' union works and the way that seniority works in schools, you're kind of making a very long-term decision for yourself. And the number one thing I hear them talk about is like whether they can get a place to live in the city they want to teach at. And right now, we're seeing Palo Alto struggle to retain teacher talent. They have a lot of money, but the population of Palo Alto doubles or triples every day as everyone commutes there, and no one can live there. And they're finding that they literally cannot retain teachers to teach their children. This is a very long-term systemic issue facing almost every municipality in the San Francisco Bay Area region. And you have a lot to gain by permitting a large amount of housing here. You have the opportunity to ensure that your community will be sustainable indefinitely, not just in the environmental sense, which other speakers have addressed, but in the long-term commercial sense, that you will be able to retain quality teachers because your house, your cost of living is lower than in other municipalities. You'll be able to retain quality firefighters, health workers, all the social infrastructure needed to create like a vibrant, functional community. This can only be done with sufficient housing. And the decision to not build housing now in the name of retaining some kind of quality-of-life balance that you see in front of you right now, that balance will shift in the future. Every year that passes that you don't build housing, the cost of housing will increase in your locale. And there will come a time where you will face, perhaps, the sort of specter of what Palo Alto is facing, which is the literal inability to retain critical social infrastructure just because people can't afford to live here. So I would urge you to reconsider putting off a decision on this topic. I think every year that passes without a decision is a year that property values increases and that rents go up, that housing delayed is housing denied functionally. So I just urge you to make a responsible, long-term decision as early as possible. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jesse Vaughn?
Madam Mayor, city council, thank you for your time. I'll keep my commentary short, because I know you have a lot of people that want to speak. During my day job at Landed, we help teachers and school staff access homeownership. As you heard from the previous speaker, this is a very hard job to do in the peninsula. Many of the teachers we work with, we hear heart-wrenching stories. People are commuting into our communities from two hours away, sometimes even longer. Some are staying in hotels and motels for part of the week, just because the commute is so long. That results in negative educational outcomes, it results in them not being able to stay after school. It's really horrendous for our community. The options for them are clearly bad. Many of them to rent, they have to rent to save for a down payment, to rent that if they're lucky, they can move in with their parents. If they're less lucky, they can commute even further. And ultimately, their options are limited. It's not exclusively teachers that are having a hard time, by any means. It expands to all essential workers in our community, and it expands to professionals that are like myself, who would love to enjoy living in your community but just can't access homes even today at their cost. So I would just ask you to consider, consider how much of an impact it'll make to have, to allow these kinds of people to live a little bit closer to your community. As a supporter of housing, I don't, I don't mean to say I want you to build more housing because I think it'll be easy. I am asking you to do it because, and knowing that it will be hard and that it will mean changes, that it will be challenging for our communities, but knowing also that it is essential for our communities to thrive and develop a better future. So thank you for this time.
Thank you. Nicole Nebolsi?
My name is Nicole Nebolsi, and I'm speaking as a law student. I just finished my first year. And I have to say that oftentimes when I'm talking to my colleagues in law school about what we're going to do afterwards, it's serious decisions, especially in this area. And with all due respect, I hope that you recognize the decision that you make when you vote, how that impacts students like me. Now, I'm going on to my second, secondary education. Now, they say that the average law student in one of the top 10 law schools ends up making $60,000 per year. Then you're looking at median income rents in San Francisco of $4,000. This, the decision that you make ultimately determines whether people like me in law, not necessarily even able to make over $100,000 as soon as we graduate, and with $120,000 worth of law school loans, can stay here in the Bay Area. So with all due respect, I hope you make the right decision today.
Thank you. Todd David?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Todd David, San Francisco Housing Action Coalition. First, I would like to just echo what Evelyn Stivers said earlier today. Thank you for continuing this conversation, and, you know, I am hopeful that we are going to be able to collectively get to yes and come to a decision that everyone's going to be happy with. So, you know, I think that progress is being made, and as these conversations continue, I think it's really good. So I want to start with that. And then, I'm going to switch gears. I was contacted by Senator Weiner today, and he asked me to read a statement on his behalf. Joining him in the statement is Assemblymember Mullins, whose staff is here, along with Assemblymember Filting and Assemblymember David Cho. So this is their statement. "The Bay Area and California are in this housing crisis for a long list of reasons, but the fundamental issue is that we simply do not have enough housing that our residents can afford. California got here as the result of thousands of decisions, like the one being considered by the Brisbane City Council, where the question was, should we build housing? And if so, how much housing should we build? Too often, the answer has been to either build no housing or to build very little of it. Cities, both large and small, can no longer ignore their role in our regional need for more housing. If we had been more proactive in building housing 10 years ago, we wouldn't be in the mess we are in today. And if we don't start building today, it's going to be even worse 10 years from now. Our housing crisis impacts our residents, our economy, and our environment." Our housing crisis impacts our residents, our economy, and our environment. The California Legislature has been working on a package of bills that will both increase funding for affordable housing and streamline the process for building housing, including affordable housing. These bills are in response to the clear need to change California's approach to housing, and we're working hard to deliver on these policies. But we also need our local governments to step up and recognize that decisions made by one city impact the entire region. Moving the Baylands development forward with no housing or inadequate housing would be a dramatic lost opportunity to provide housing for thousands of Bay Area residents. By contrast, approving a plan with thousands of homes accessible to public transit would show the kind of local leadership we need if we are going to pull ourselves out of this housing crisis. We urge the Brisbane City Council to put forward a plan that will add significant housing for Bay Area residents who so desperately need it." Once again, that was from Senator Weiner, Assemblymember Mullins, Assemblymen, Assemblymember Filting, and Assemblymember David Cho. Thank you.
Could you give that to the city clerk, please? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephen Bus. I live in San Francisco, like a number of people here. And I moved here for a job about a year and a half ago. I am faced with the uncomfortable reality of being a gentrifier, you know, and I'll admit that. I work in tech. I moved into the Mission, historically Latino neighborhood, and my presence there, you know, displaces long-term residents. And, you know, I lived there because it was the place I could afford. It's near the BART line that I take to work every day, and it's a thriving, wonderful cultural community. But it really pains me that, in order to live there, I basically had to force someone out. And this is happening because we are not collectively building enough housing. We need to get ahead of this problem. We need to make it so that anyone who wants to live here can move here without having to kick someone else out. And the only way to do that is if we build more housing. So, please reconsider not voting on this today and vote yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tim Collin, and I'm speaking on behalf of the 300 members of the San Francisco Housing Action Coalition. There's no denying it, you face a tough vote tonight. And I think the answers we hope to hear tonight sort of go to, who are you and what are the values of Brisbane? Where do you stand on the enormous challenges facing California and the Bay Area? You have two competing proposals in front of you. You have the, as I understand it, the city-preferred alternative, and the best thing I can say is that it's silly. It's firmly rooted in land-use principles from the 1960s. Not only does it not respond to the challenges we face, but it makes them worse, and especially traffic and housing. And you can't be unaware of the condition we're in right now. The other proposal is a mixed-use development from UPC, and it's a good, it's a good idea. It addresses the problems that we face. And I should emphasize, it's the type of project that successful cities around the United States are running to build right now. Regardless of how you vote tonight, projects like that are the future. It's hard to imagine that a commercial-only project is going to get built. It's not hard to think that there'd be prolonged litigation. It's going to take a lot of time. A small town would need additional sources of revenue to fund ongoing litigation. And as you're increasingly hearing, Sacramento's not likely to be friendly to a commercial-only project. If you vote no, I suppose the best you could hope to do is maybe kick the can down the road for a while, sort of pull the shades down, turn off the porch light, say no one's home, and try hard to prevent change from coming here. But the prospects for that are not good. But if you wanted, and if you saw the benefits, you could face the mixed-use project, the UPC project squarely, roll up your sleeves, and start negotiating to make it a great project for Brisbane that brought investment and benefits you could never do without, do alone without a project like that. It really could deliver something quite remarkable. The transit investment alone that's being proposed as part of this should be reason enough to approve it without anything else. There are towns around the Bay Area and state that would kill for an investment like that in transit that will be a benefit to Brisbane in decades to come. The mixed-use project could also deliver benefits like, you know, a school, recreational facilities, parks, and community spaces you could never do on your own. You have an opportunity to do something truly remarkable for this town. Opportunities like the Baylands, this piece of property, are very, very rare and should not be squandered for being put into the highest and best use, which you're going to hear more and more, is something like a mixed-use project like UPC is proposing. And you will be judged on the vote, how you responded at this time with the housing and affordability crisis, our transportation equity, environmental crises, how, where do you stand on this? What is your choice? I implore you, I implore you to join the Bay Area, join all the communities that are working hard trying to develop solutions to our challenges. Thank you for your time.
My apologies, this one's hard to read.
Hi, Laura Clark. I'm the Executive Director of YIMBY Action. That's a pro-housing advocacy group. So, I hear lots of sad stories all day. But this morning, I was on a flight from my home, my family's kind of based in a town in Maine, and I was flying in, and someone saw a sticker on my bag that said legalize housing. And immediately runs up and says, oh my God, you know, that sticker's so amazing. And as often happens to me, launches into her housing story. And I get these all the time. Everybody has a housing story. And her housing story is that she and her husband are both have good jobs, and they're getting raises, and they have a special-needs child, and they cannot afford to remain in the Bay Area. And so, despite the fact that they have both been given raises, and despite the fact that there is a good school here and that they want to remain here, they're gone now. So, they will be, she's flying back home. She finally figured out where they're going to live on the East Coast, and she and her family will be relocating. And, and that's it for them. They can't hold on anymore. I then spent the rest of the afternoon going to the RVs along El Camino, right by Stanford, and knocking on doors there and listening to the stories of the people who live in the RVs because they can't find housing. And there were multiple teenagers living with their parents in RVs along there. Parents who have full-time or two jobs and are struggling to get by and can't find housing in the area. But they can find jobs, but they can't find housing. And then, I spent the late evening going to the nearby Brisbane trailer park and knocking on doors there and meeting with a lot of people who also have jobs but can't find housing. And they're in housing. They're in housing. Is that, is that good enough for you? Is the housing that they are living in good enough for you? Are you going to be able to frankly wake up after you've taken these votes and sleep well, knowing that you have made the crisis worse? I hope that you understand the full consequences of this issue. I hope you understand the consequences for your own kids. I hope that you understand that every time you continue to only build jobs and not build housing, we make this problem worse. We make this problem a lot worse. I put off having kids because I wasn't going to be able to get my housing situation right. I have people living in my office at times because they can't find housing. The crisis is at a level that I want the citizens of Brisbane to fully comprehend because I know that there are probably tent encampments in Brisbane. I mean, I haven't, you know, I don't know everything that happens in this town, but I do know that there are families living in that trailer park who are struggling. And I hope that you hear their voices as much as you hear everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Thank you for having us here. I really do appreciate it. So, my name is Sam Moss. I'm the Executive Director of Mission Housing Development Corporation. We're a 46-year-old nonprofit that builds and owns 100% affordable housing, mostly for families, but also for seniors and, and others. And you know, like I have my dream job. I love it. There is an infinite demand for affordable housing in this city, in this Bay Area. And you know, the reason there is infinite demand is frankly because of the Brisbane's of the Bay Area, you know, assuming that San Francisco will solve all the housing problems and we can just bring the jobs here. And, you know, yeah, I don't, I don't live in Brisbane. Even if I wanted to, I couldn't afford it. I'd like to point that out. But I live eight miles away, and that's really not that far. It is a Bay Area. We live in a Bay Area. We don't all live on little islands that are secluded from each other. And I, I respect your desire to keep your small-town feel. While I might not necessarily myself want that, I respect your desire to keep it. I just hope that you know that keeping it negatively affects a gazillion other people who don't have that choice, who can't just move to a small town. And I hope you consider that, both when you're deciding on to not vote, I guess, tonight, and when you finally do decide to vote. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council. First, I'd like to say all these moral arguments about how Brisbane owes the rest of the region and the state to fix the problems that everybody else created, that we did not create, are hollow arguments. A lot of emotion there, not a lot of logic there. San Francisco decided a long time ago not to be Hong Kong. They put a moratorium on housing in three-quarters of the city, essentially single and one and two units. They could lift that tomorrow. They're not going to do that. We've heard reports here in this chamber, I think it was last, last meeting or one before, that something like 40,000 units are already proposed all around us, including 24,000 or so in San Francisco, that will be coming online in the next five or 10 years, I guess. So, talking about Brisbane like we're in a vacuum is a big mistake. And as a matter of fact, just, just on the other side of the border from us in Visitation Valley at the Slade Lock Development, where the same developer is working there, the city of San Francisco, the residents in that immediate area, just a few hundred of them out of a neighborhood with over 20,000, only a few hundred vocal residents, worked to reduce the size of that project, where it could have been much higher density than the 1,700 or so, 1,650 or so units that are currently planned there, that are currently, ground is already broken on that project. And the possibility of other units that the same developer owns very close to that in the Executive Park in San Francisco with 24-story towers planned. I don't know the total units there, but you're talking about a lot of development that's on the drawing board and either approved or close to being approved. So, in Brisbane, also to hear that this project is a great project or a visionary project, I don't see it that way, and many other people in Brisbane don't see it that way, and we'd be happy to see something that way. We don't see this as being that. Quickly, I'm going to read the letter that I'll turn into Ingrid. "Baylands Deliberations: Why No Housing? Housing on the Baylands is currently prohibited. It should not even be up for discussion. Our Planning Commission recommended a plan they judge to be practical and both environmentally and economically sound. Rather than concentrating on that option as the preferred one, you have spent months laboring over the developers' preferences. On July 24th, Madison Davis raised the question of a general election vote to identify the true public opinion for or against housing on the Baylands. And I followed her idea by suggesting three items be asked. Housing, yes or no? Developers' plan? Amend the current Brisbane general plan to allow housing on the Baylands, yes or no? Planning Commission recommendation, yes or no? The belief that the Baylands cannot or will never be made safe for housing may be wrong, but it has not been proven wrong. More importantly, who or what has prevented this property owner from completing remediation of their lands at the top safety standard for housing over the term of their ownership? I think no one, just their own selfish interests, to use the threat of constantly polluted lands as a bargaining chip in their efforts to persuade our city council and voters to give them the unearned gift of billions in additional windfall profits by amending our general plan. No one can justify that position by claiming Brisbane is standing in the way of fixing the crisis others made all around us. The regional responsibility argument is a fraud, just like the A-Bag plans to include 4,400 new units in Brisbane that we have no intention of ever building. Even if, even if they had cleaned up the, or remediated all of their land already, Brisbane has no obligation to subject itself to either the hypergrowth these public proposals would mean, nor to the potential political power shift, which should be expected if our city fails to uphold its own general plan now. It's good to, it's good to finally read that a couple of San Francisco's former mayors, now longer, no longer in office, are willing to admit their city's part in creating this housing crisis. However, while San Francisco failed again to maximize density at this developer's Slade Lock site, they want us to build more. They say it's selfish not to embrace the end of our small-town quality of life as they seek to dictate our future for, to us, on their own, for their own benefit. I suggest you go first. Lift all the height and density restrictions throughout San Francisco, Daly City, and South San Francisco, and leave us to decide the little that we have a right to control. Housing and environmental advocates are reported to have suggested our Baylands feel is just piles of dirt, not worthy of anything but the same sprawl they so much argue against in other locations. That is hypocritical. Many who build over, many would build over in Golden Gate Park if they got a chance to, and I would rather see Brisbane facilitate the building of the next great park right here, complete with its own energy farm. The, the great lie is that many small towns like Brisbane owe anything to the great cities around us. Every problem has a solution, some better than others, some far worse. We in Brisbane have, have the courage to seek the highest value use and not allow ourselves to be bullied into accepting the tired old lies that more housing will really help end the imbalance, which has proven to be beyond simple supply and demand. Change in the right direction is okay, to paraphrase Winston Churchill. This developer plan is the wrong direction. Thank you.
Hello, I am Theodore, resident of San Francisco, and, and I will point out that trying to build housing in the Baylands is not, not just about regional responsibility or anything like that. It's about giving people access to opportunities. Clearly, clearly you think that there would be, that there is opportunity, more ability to have jobs because, because of considering the plan to build more offices, more factories and stuff without, without any housing. But, but if you do that, then, then the people who are becoming for these opportunities will have to be commuting from long distances away, and all the, all the profits, all the value that they would be generating here would be eaten up by high, high fees, high rental fees, a high land fee, high land costs, high home costs, and, and by greenhouse gas emissions as they commute from long distances away. And also, I am, historically, people have, when people have had opportunities, people have moved into cities, and then cities have grown to accommodate the people to get, so they can have access to those opportunities. Cities- Um, cities regularly used to grow over a hundred percent, uh, within ten years, and, uh, and they became better for having more people. They became better for having, uh, more homes for people to live. And so, um, so I want you to consider, uh, um, making, uh, making Brisbane, uh, better by giving more people places to live. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Jim, Jimmy Sosa.
Thank you. So, uh, I live in Brisbane. I moved here in nineteen eighty-two. And I picked this town because it reminded me of Sausalito. And have you ever been to Sausalito? They, nobody builds around there. Nobody. Leave it the way it is. It's beautiful. Brisbane's the same way. I see all these people come up here to talk. They say, "We live in San Mateo County. You don't live in Brisbane. You can't talk from my town. This is my town. This is where I live. It's where I raised my children. I'm a grandfather. My grandchildren live here now." You people that want to move in here, sorry to hear it, but you know what? None of you know what the rent's even gonna be like. You students who are struggling, I get it. Your daughter's a student. She's struggling.
Excuse me, Mr. Spencer, could we get you to speak in the microphone?
I'm sorry, but, um, there's no guarantee that you're gonna be able to afford a place in the Baylands. So, has anybody given you what a rental cost is gonna be, what a home is gonna cost? I haven't seen any figures on what a one-bedroom's gonna go for. How do you know that everything you're trying to put, all your energy here, is gonna pay out for you? You still may not make it here. There's the young lady that spoke for San Mateo County. I work for San Mateo County. I'm a social worker. I help homeless people all the time. The problem isn't the housing, it's the problem is that the people that live in this county can't afford it anymore. And other people that are coming in, the dot-comers and other folks who have a lot of cash are moving these poor families out. That's the housing problem. People can afford it, but just not the people that live here anymore. Not the people that grew up here, born and raised in this county. Okay? So, you folks, you students, I feel for you. It's a tough, it's a tough game, but there's no guarantee you're gonna be able to afford an apartment in the Baylands. Has anybody given you what the rent's gonna cost? I doubt it, 'cause I haven't seen it in print yet. I see a lot of greedy people wanting to build this thing up really quick without any real clear investigation of even who this, this person that's funding this whole project is. Supposedly, this person is in Asia somewhere. We don't even know his name. Could he be a gangster? We don't know. We don't know nothing, 'cause nobody wants to give up his name. Right? Let's put this man in print. You people wanna stand up here and talk about housing? Let's find out who this person is. He may be just taking your money. You don't know that. The traffic problem. We're gonna have a huge traffic problem. Levi's Stadium is spending millions and dollars on traffic studies. Do you think they got it right?
No.
Try to get out to a game. You spend more time in traffic than you do in the stadium. And that's with millions of dollars in traffic study, and with all these little traffic, uh, transit lines built, these rails to get people in and out, they still a mess. So, we haven't done all that. And if anybody's noticed the traffic here, we got Bay Shore, two lanes going this way, and we got the one-on-one, and we got Tunnel Road. That's, it's a mess in the morning when you're trying to get to work. Don't imagine ten thousand more people being thrown into that little box out there. Let's build a park. Let's build a place, recreational area for children so they can get out, start getting out a little bit more, give up that TV and those little, you know, tech scene, and let's build something else. I'm in, I'm in line for a park. But I also understand that that area may be toxic and contaminated. We don't know. Again, I just jumped into this three weeks ago, and I'm finding out a lot more than I did when I first started hearing about the Bayland. So, to you, I say collectively, no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Laxamana, Brisbane resident. It's a tough act to follow Jimmy, the soccer coach, my son, but I don't agree. Um, thirty years Brisbane resident, twenty-five years Visitation Valley. So, we have a fifty-year-old dump. Why are we trying to save it? I mean, you know, really, why are we trying to save it? We have had all this history to save San Bruno Mountain. We probably have that in jeopardy now, to be honest with you, though I would fight it with you, Terry, all the way. But this is a dump. This is a rail yard that can be, with remediation, housing put on it. You know what? Why are we trying to save it? I mean, let's do the right thing. This is the right thing to do. It's the right time. It's what you all have to consider. I respect that. But it is the right time, and it's the right thing to do. Housing, yes.
Thank you.
Hello. Uh, my name is Tom, and by the grace of luck and charitable friends with Rent Control Apartments, I live next door in San Francisco. Uh, last time I spoke to you all, I rattled off some facts and figures, and I'm guessing you might have heard a lot of those by now, so I'll go more personal this time. Uh, growing up in Chicago, I loved learning about the earth and animals and nature, and my favorite day of the year was Arbor Day because we got to take a tree sapling home from school and plant it. I knew that planting trees would help reduce pollution and make the earth better for everyone. I didn't know why more people didn't plant trees everywhere. Flash forward an undisclosed number of years, and I eventually became involved in local politics, first in Chicago and now in the Bay Area. While I might be upset when a candidate I like doesn't win, or a bill I like doesn't pass, I usually understand the logic of the opposition. In the case of whether to build housing near transit like at Baylands, given all the facts that we've all heard, it is so undeniably the right thing to do, and it is so dismaying that the council might vote against it. It is so clear that it is the right thing to do for the housing scarcity crisis and reducing car emissions that I just do not understand how, after serious thought, someone could be against it. You might wonder why so many people are here from neighboring communities. Well, for me, riding my bike here after work is my adult version of planting a tree. I guess I'll never shake it. It just feels like the right thing to do. So, I must plead with you to do the right thing, allow this once-in-a-generation opportunity for transit-oriented housing at the Baylands. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I don't want you to certify the ARR, and I don't want you to approve the developer's plan. And my objection isn't because Brisbane's character might change. I've lived through many changes. I've lived here all my life. My mother lived here all of her life. And if things didn't change, life wouldn't go on. But the real objection to housing isn't the growth of Brisbane, it's the inadequacy of the environmental impact review and the lack of actual cleanup plans and closure of the landfill. Yes or no, maybe, not negotiable. Even one housing unit shifts the burden of infrastructure to the public, and that's where the real money lies for the developer. We've talked a lot about the regional welfare doctrine and our regional responsibilities. And if you are looking at regional responsibilities, you should be looking at the regional benefits that that area could give us in terms of energy production, high-speed rail, and what could affect us at a more intrinsic level than being able to go to zero waste right there at recology. And I just feel that going out and building more housing isn't gonna solve the housing crisis at all. We have a housing crisis? We have a population crisis is what we really have. And San Francisco tried to address it many years ago, back in the eighties, they had something called the Saint Francis Housing Authority, where when they built these big buildings, those buildings had to contribute to public housing projects. San Francisco took the money, but I sure didn't see the public housing projects from that funding that they got. And it continues. I mean, y- you talk about a bi-county, um, or a multiple-county, sorry, um, priority development area, but look at the Salesforce Tower. Where's the housing from San Francisco for that? And even on this project, if you just look at the developer's plan, they're talking a mere forty-four-hundreds and something units of housing against eight to twelve million square feet of commercial space, whatever kind of commercial space that is. Oh, that's, oh, right up there with that ratio that people were talking about, about one housing unit to every eight jobs? You think this is gonna be any better? Do you think this is gonna address the problem? No. What this does is shift the burden to the public for the infrastructure for the developer. Follow the money people. I was so, so disappointed at one of these last meetings when all the housing advocates came, and Green Belt Alliance stood up and endorsed the developer's plan. And I asked the young man who spoke, "Oh, you know, how much did they pay you to do that?" "Oh, I don't know. Uh-uh, they didn't pay it." Well, I went and looked up their financial report, and guess what? Yes, they did. They had, they had a fundraiser for the San, for the Green Belt Alliance, and they're also a major contributor. And about a fifth of the annual budget comes from the San Francisco Housing Action Coalition, and there are three hundred members who aren't people, they're developers. So, let's just really be clear about who is populating this room here. And, and the developer has really done their job to bring out and try to make you feel guilty. And you know what? We shouldn't squander this property. We should put it to the highest and best use, and we should work on solutions for our challenges, and we should look at the consequences for our kids. Your kids, their kids, whoever's kids. You know, Jerry Hill's office is completely right. This is a rare and important opportunity to do the right thing for future generations. Do you think the right thing for future generations is to add another drop in the bucket of, of housing? Or is it to do renewable energy, water conservation, zero waste? You get the picture. So, you wanna do something rare and important, do it, uh, take the opportunity to do something for the public, have the courage to stand up against all of these paid housing advocates, all the me, 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 I want, I want, I want, and do something that really will benefit not just one future generation, but multiple future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hexter.
Yes.
Got it right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Uh, I just wanna, uh, I'm a local climate activist. I used to live in San Mateo County, essentially priced out of the county, not only that, but I live now in Alameda County. But I wanna, uh, talk a little bit and present this and put this into the, uh, give this to, um, the clerk. What they basically, uh, I wanna talk about greenhouse gas emissions, which is one of the issues here. There are a lot of people here who are talking very articulately about the human cost of not building housing, but we also have the greenhouse gas emissions that are caused by our lifestyle. In other words, the way we live now is unsustainable. Okay? Uh, living in suburbs or in sprawling suburbs, we're dependent on fossil fuels. And California in particular, our, our emissions are lower than other ci- uh, areas of the country because of our mild climate. But, um, we really have a, a very big transportation emissions problem. Here you have the, um, uh, greenhouse gas emissions inventory from, uh, ARB, okay, in Sacramento, and you see the big slice here is transportation emissions. This is us driving our cars around because we live very far, many of us live very far from our work and far from the things we wanna do. So, uh, building, not building housing here will cause this to either remain the same, okay? This big slice, thirty-nine percent, or will cause it to grow, okay? Uh, building more commercial development here and, uh, without housing, without a substantial housing proportion, will make this grow because of all those people coming over. The, um, you know, the, uh, the Alamo Pass, among other places, and also just from the Tri-Valley area to jobs here in San Mateo County. So, I, I want you to consider, uh, voting on and approving the proposal for more housing here on this property, and other than that, I'd have nothing else to say.
Thank you. And if you could provide that to our city clerk? Thank you. Danny Ames.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for, for listening to the residents of Brisbane. Um, you know, there should be reasonable respect for Brisbane as well. We have a general plan that was thought, uh, in nineteen ninety-four. So, planning, history decisions are not made lightly around here. Uh, I see a real insensitivity to the will of our community. There's a Constitution of the United States where there's a Constitution of Brisbane, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, the local leadership has really been terrific to the residents here, and I'd like to see it to continue to be that way. Uh, but there are outside influences. Uh, Mayor Ed Lee cutting the corporate tax in half has created this tech boom. You know, there's several values, uh, at play here, and I think, uh, you guys have had the, the finger wagged at you, uh, from, from many places, and a lot of them are out of town. I would like to remind, um, you guys what, um, the general plan is. In nineteen ninety-four, Chapter Three, Community, Community Character, I'd like to read that. "The city of Brisbane and its mountain will remain a place of independent and distinct with a small-town quality and a volunteer spirit, where diversity is welcome and everybody can participate in town meetings. And elected officials carefully consider the desires and the needs of the citizens and govern through circumscribed rules and regulations only as required for the public health and safety and protection of the environment." I'd like to go on a little bit more. This is about Brisbane and its mountain. "Its stands, more than a thousand feet high, this great outcroppin of rock and scrub brush that surrounds the town like a pair of loving hands, isolating Brisbane from the busy metropolis grown up around, preserving here a time capsule of the way life was years ago, quiet, unhurried, comfortable in its familiarity with the land." Walter Blum. Wrote that. I wanna carry on with another, uh, just two more paragraphs. Looks like I've got time. "Many factors contribute to the sense of security and well-being of the members of a community, including family, shelter, food, and safety. In Brisbane, this sense of security and well-being is also provided by San Bruno Mountain. There, a very personal feeling in Brisbane about the mountain. As former Mayor Anya Miller said in nineteen seventy-five, 'You're protected in a way this is what makes us a community. We all look out for each other and this bowl, and there is a feel of neighborhood that you don't get in other towns.'" This chapter attempts to capture the importance of how the mountain looks and feels to Brisbane, and how we can be good stewards for it. "San Bruno Mountain rises above the San Francisco Bay and dominates the landscape of northern San Mateo County. Despite all the development in its valleys and on its slopes, it retains the character of what it may have looked like to the Castonian Indians and Spanish explorers. The bushlands, the grasslands still mix with the sharper old oak and coastal sage growing in their native habitat. On the sheltered eastern side of the mountain, Owl and Buckeye Canyons face northwardly and contain the largest woodland communities. The mountain is a habitat for many small animals, including meadow mice, ground squirrels, moles, raccoons, rabbits, opossums, and even foxes. The significance of San Bruno Mountain lies in its role as a natural protector from the elements, habitat for protected and endangered species, a course for carrying storm waters and centerpiece of local identity and history, a resource for recreational activities, a definer of geographical identity within its bowl, and an enduring source of visual beauty." At this point, I'd like you to, in its current form, deny UPC's application until they can come back with something more reasonable. I'm against the potential of red lock. Freaks out a lot of people around here, and, um, the town character is at stake. Please keep it the way we love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Sharfman.
Madam Mayor, Council, and thank you for your very dedicated and diligent work on this. And this is the twelfth year I've been standing before, before you, especially Mr. Conway here, and I sincerely thank you for your consideration. While this process has been long and sometimes difficult, UPC's approached it with four touchstones. We've tried to create a project. We've tried to nurture a project that's healthy for the planet and consistent with Brisbane's core values. Right for the region, good for Brisbane, and feasible for UPC or any successors for UPC to build. We know that this council is skeptical about whether new housing and significant numbers of new jobs are good for of new jobs are good for Brisbane. I personally respect that. I want you to know, I personally respect that struggle. But the strategic location of this site, next to major public transit systems, makes this a once-in-a-generation opportunity. And we hope that Brisbane overcomes its reservations and sees the opportunity to, to clean up and transform the Baylands, create great accessible open space, attract new businesses, and shopping opportunities and recreational opportunities to the area, and help solve some of the greatest challenges of our time that have been talked about in many different ways over the years here. We also want to remind you, as I have before, that we stand ready to work with you to move forward with a project that is healthy, right, good, and feasible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name's Alfred, and I come here from Berkeley tonight. And if you're wondering, why did I make the trip all the way across the bay for this? It's because this is a regional issue. I understand the concerns that the residents here have about the environment, about potential for solar panel generation of energy or for a park there. I understand their concern for a small-town feel. I think that's also a red herring because, as they say, when you're looking for a problem, follow the money. And when, what I've seen is that what the city of Brisbane is considering right now is not the choice between housing and a park. It's a choice between housing and a massive commercial development of hotels, office parks, and retail. I looked at your budget. Most of your money comes from sales taxes, hotel taxes, special business taxes charged to Recology and other businesses. You want to make money off people visiting, shopping, playing, recycling in the Bay Area? Fine. Everybody does. That's perfectly understandable. But however, to do that without providing the places for the workers who generate that wealth to live is irresponsible at best. Some might even call that freeloading, expecting other cities to take up the cost of educating and housing the people who work and make the Bay Area run and provide the places for people to visit and play and shop. In my city of Berkeley, we have been taxing ourselves vast amounts of money to plug the hole in housing and education that places like Brisbane have left us. Just last year, we raised taxes on ourselves, $4 million, just for affordable housing in the city of Berkeley. Additional millions of dollars for public schools that the people living in these new homes will attend. On a 28-inch ballot, we're probably going to go back for more because we're far from enough. We have over 1,000 people homeless in our city of Berkeley. And that's not even counting the people who are doubled up due to a bedroom. So in this room here, yes, there are the residents of your town that you represent, but there's also many of the current and future leaders of other parts of the Bay Area, other parts of the state. And we don't like what we see here, this choice to fill out all this commercial development of the city's preferred option without providing any housing for the people who live there. And we're going to remember that. When it comes time for us to decide, okay, let's say I have a friend coming from, out of town, they need a place to stay in a hotel. I'll tell them, "Don't stay in Brisbane." And my friend, when holidays come around and my friends are going holiday shopping, I'll tell them, "Don't shop in Brisbane." No homes, no shop. Boycott Brisbane. That, this is, we're going to make this blow up. For every person you see here in this room, there are at least several dozen more following this online, on Twitter, on internet, on our mailing list, and we are going to remember this because you cannot do this to the rest of the Bay Area, taking our money, wanting our sales tax revenue, but not providing homes. And so I'll leave you with this. You really have three choices. You have the commercial development. You have the housing development. And you can just leave the site as it is. Preferably, I would like to see housing built there. But if you can't do that, and if you're really genuine about preserving the small-town feel, I'd better see a park there. Because if what ends up happening there is commercial development, well, all those arguments about the polluted land, about the traffic, that's just baloney. Because you'll see even more of that. So I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you very much for your time this evening. My name's Sarah Seeloff. I'm the Executive Director of the Center for Creative Land Recycling. We're a national nonprofit based in Oakland. You've heard from me several times. We've been down as an independent educational resource to serve the city, to serve the council and its staff. And I'm here tonight to offer you some more resources and comment a little bit about remediation in response to some of the, the comments that I've heard. First, resources. Wanted to make you aware that on October 12th in Redwood City, in partnership with San Mateo County, we will be hosting a luncheon and a workshop focused on infill housing. It's going to be a great day. We encourage you to come down. We'd love to host you. We also have a variety of resources on our website. Recently, we've had a series of webinars that you may find interesting. We had one called "When Life Hands You a Landfill," focused on landfill remediation. It's available, recorded, on our website, all free. We have another website, or excuse me, we have another webinar that was just completed called "Remediation 101." So should you or your constituents be in need of any kind of information about cleanup, you can find it there. And then finally, we have more webinars stretching out. Our next one is going to be September 13th, and that will be focused on in situ remediation. So in other words, solutions that don't involve digging and hauling and placing tons of dirt into trucks and pumping carbon into the air. We are also getting ready to release a white paper that provides an easily digestible resource for decision-makers like you and your constituents. It is not yet in final form, but I went ahead and shared it with the city staff so that you'll have a copy in case it's useful. I want to switch now to talking about remediation. CCLR typically does not advocate for a particular end use, but I do want to comment specifically on housing because there's been a lot of talk about that tonight. We have seen lands safely remediated and reused for a plethora of end uses, including the ones that you are considering tonight, including housing. In Sacramento, there are two rail yards under redevelopment. There will be housing on both of those sites. Truckee is breaking ground on a redevelopment of a rail yard. And landfills get redeveloped all the time. The highest grossing Home Depot in the country, fun fact, is right up the road in Colma, and it's built on a former landfill. There was a comment made earlier about the, about toxic land, and there's a lot of fear around contamination. And I do want to point out that, you know, as I noted on June 15th, when I was here with a colleague who helped shape the redevelopment of Emeryville, that remediation costs money. It's paid for by the development of the site. That's the, the trade-off that's made. It's not a political statement. It's an economic fact, and so I just wanted to get that out there for the record. Remediation is a highly regulated process, as you're no doubt aware, and there are opportunities for public engagement. Finally, I did want to comment that zero waste, water conservation, green energy, and other green goals are not mutually exclusive from the world of housing, of mixed-use development, of all the things that we're talking about tonight. Indeed, a pillar of our national programs is to focus on climate-forward redevelopment. So in other words, we see redevelopment as an opportunity to start tabula rasa from the ground up. You have a chance to start from scratch, and the sky is the limit. We all recognize that the climate is changing, and so what we at CCLR try to do is to pull together those examples of super-green redevelopment from across the country. Because we don't know what the climate is necessarily going to look like in 25 or 50 years, so we had better be very forward-leaning when we have the chance to make decisions about it today. And so we're here as a resource for you. The sky's the limit. I encourage you to think about what will keep the sky blue and not smogged in. And to you and your residents, please do count us as a resource. We offer our services free of charge or at very low cost in the case of some of our workshops. We obviously have a lot coming down the pike here in the Bay Area, and we've been here for you throughout many of these deliberations, and we want to continue to be here for you as a resource. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. And can you let us know what is your website where we can find those webinars?
Yes. www.cclr.org, and I will send a link to Ingrid.
Great.
Madam Mayor, do you mind if we take a five-minute break?
Sure. That's fine. So we'll adjourn for a five-minute break. Thank you.